We will call for order like you mentioned on Wednesday, September 4th, 2024. And we will call Commissioner Olay.
Present.
Commissioner Beller.
Present.
Commissioner Longrest.
Present.
And Commissioner Mclough.
Present.
Okay, and so now we will move on to agenda number, or again, the number. Item number two, opportunity for public comment on non-agenda items. We don't have a public hearing for our, or item. This is an opportunity for the public to comment and we have public hearings on land use. Portion of it at a later date, so I will open the public period on non-agenda items.
And we do have Michael Thomas online, at least, that would like to speak. Go ahead, Michael.
Hey, Mike Thomas, 1231 La Forest. Hey, I want to modify my last comment. The person who was speaking before, if that's the chair, as remote audio participant, your audio is extremely muffled and it's very difficult to hear you. I don't know if you can move closer to the mic or if the mic can be moved closer to you. But this is a disappointing experience and really not appropriate as a disability accommodation for those participating remotely. Reason for these remote participation, you know, under the OPMA is to facilitate those who can't attend in person. That's also for disability accommodations as well. And I have mentioned this in the last meeting. This needs attention before action is taken. And I want to put this on the record, that this needs to improve. Otherwise, I view this as a violation of the ADA and a violation of the spirit of OPMA. You are not facilitating remote participant input. Now, with that said, I do want to make some comments about the last, last meeting. Actually, with one of the outcomes of the August 7th. And I do wish to thank Planning Commission members for their participation. I know you serve as an unpaid volunteer and appointed to this, this meeting. Perhaps, you know, one of the commissioners or staff could explain how the development agreement, you know, for that parcel near Truck Town really ended in Planning Commission. City Council was, you know, scratching with the sort of the same sort of question. You know, do, do all development agreements by default just simply must pass through Planning Commission first? Or, you know, or do they not? The result of, you know, bringing that DA is the City Council tabled it and sent it back for vote again on October 1st, an intensive work study. You know, I put comments on the record about, you know, my concerns. Many citizens and councilmen echoed the same concern, simply that there simply wasn't enough information to assess, you know, what was, what was being asked. In review, like, for example, the concession for a reduction in traffic impact fees, you don't know what those traffic impact fees are until you know what the type of development it is. You know, the fees are variable depending on the type of business that are there. So I think it's a very valid reason to reject it on that basis. Similarly, stormwater, you know, if you don't know the impervious surface area, how can you assess, you know, the fees and reduction, you know, for that? I would kind of hope, and again, perhaps, you know, another item that was raised was the, the point that maybe the citizens were asking was, you know, is this really a land use decision? I didn't see this as a land use decision at all. There was no ask for variance, no ask for conditional use, no ask in variance from, you know, what is, you know, known and understood, you know, uses and permitting and zones. It was simply an ask really for two things. A reduction in impact fees, stormwater and traffic, and a commitment to request the city not oppose, you know, moving the parcel to Salal, which could have been achieved by other means. You know, they didn't need the city's input. So perhaps as a, as a point, you know, perhaps Planning Commission might consider rejecting development agreements or proposals simply for there's insufficient information to determine compliance to code or that maybe it doesn't even belong to Planning Commission. But I do want to thank you, you know, for your efforts. I mean, folks were also asking, you know, why, why weren't some of these points raised? Maybe by citizen mass, there was huge turnout for City Council on Tuesday night. And again, you know, myself and another citizen attended, as well as even the mayor. So I think the council, you know, was kind of scratching, you know, with some of the decision. And again, you know, no harm, no foul, but perhaps, you know, something to consider in the future is, you know, rejecting things that just simply don't have enough information or maybe outside your perfect. This, again, it wasn't land use. So i- if someone could maybe for my benefit or to explain, you know, how this really landed in, in Planning Commission, it might, it might be helpful and, and I appreciate that.
You know, because we already addressed that DA on our agenda, you know, it was brought to us to, to recommend approval or deny to City Council, and we did do that. So as far as the process of development agreements going forward to the Planning Commission, that's through the process that the city has already put together for us. So that's, that's something that staff could touch on more as far as that process. And then perhaps maybe staff can look at, you know, seeing to make sure that our processes do, do adhere to disability regulations and make sure that we're covered on all of that. Opening up another, opening up that agenda again, that's not something that we would do. If the staff brought it to us or an applicant brought it to us to review again, then we could do that, but that's not something that we're going to come up again in Planning Commission.
Yeah, no, no, thank, thank you. No, I would like a moment, you know, of leave to, to comment. Absolutely, I think you can do better on audio and the reason for that, you know, is pretty obvious. And then, you know, again, I was, you know, looking for a reason because this, this seemed to be an unusual decision and it was simply for my education that, you know, hey, it's just simply, hey, all development agreements, no matter what, are sent to Planning Commission. But, you know, this puts you in a very difficult spot. I felt you were in a very challenging position as well, as well as City Council. So I'm not, not asking to bring the decision back to you, but it was just simply more of, you know, hey, if the process is, all DA's must go through Planning Commission, then so be it. But I, I really felt that it put, put folks in a, in a bad spot here. And I think council was struggling with, with the same decision. And that you might want to consider even reviewing, you know, the, the audio and video footage of that, on that. Again, planning, council plans to send it to, to work study. Again, not faulting your decision, but I would perhaps hope is that maybe, hey, there's simply not enough information. And maybe it doesn't, maybe it shouldn't have belonged to Planning Commission. Anyway, I, I do appreciate your comment and I'll pause here. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for your comments. And maybe staff is.
Yeah, at your discretion. So that is correct, that the Planning Commission does review a development agreement according to the process for a development agreement. It goes first to Planning Commission for a public hearing before the public. The Planning Commission will consider the public testimony and the evidence provided by staff regarding the reason for the development agreement. And they need to weigh whether on benefit, it's a public benefit to approve the development agreement. So that's just a built in part of the process. It has to go up to the council. The council has opportunity to consider additional public testimony. They heard last night additional comment from the public and so therefore have set up a works study to further address the issue. But the Planning Commission made their recommendation based on the information before them and the, they will make their recommendation based on that.
Does that help answer the questions that you had?
It does to some degree. I, I guess the comment is really the quality of the decision. It's like, frankly, I feel the simply not enough information in front of the Planning Commission to, to make a decision, like, for example, the magnitude in the fees. No details on the development. So again, I understand your decision. I'm not disputing your decision that, you know, perhaps in the future, if, you know, something comes in front of you and there's this not information, seems like to me it's a reasonable basis to reject it. You know, it's like, hey, we just simply can't assess this. It's, there's no way to assess its conformance to code or use or whatever. And I believe, you know, some of my comments were on the record, simply not enough information. And I think council, council echoed that. Anyway, I appreciate, I appreciate the explanation, but it sounds like to me this is by def. Let me, if I can repeat back to you what I heard, the process is simply a DA goes to Planning Commission regardless of its content. Is that a reasonable, reasonable summary?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Other than other comments that are online and waiting to make a public comment?
Any more public comments? Okay.
We will move on to public hearing at 6:41. We will move on to agenda number 34 minutes from August 23rd, 2024.
I move to approve the agenda. Uh, no, sorry, from the previous meeting, as it is.
Um, Pedro.
Hi.
Michael, we will move on to number four.
All right, well, this is the big product of a number of months of work. So we're happy to introduce it tonight. We've got a planning, a public hearing scheduled for your next Planning Commission meeting. The, the primary reason for this, again, is our 2024 major updated comprehensive plan. There are a number of things that we need to review with countywide planning policies, multi-county planning policies and updates to the Growth Management Act that we need to ensure that our comprehensive plan is consistent with. So that's what we had done. We worked with our consultant, LDC. We provided some review against some of the checklist items. We had our planning intern, Professor Sella, who you guys met at the last meeting. He helped us out with updating the checklist and went through and we added policies where we saw and needed or saw a, a missing item. And so to summarize some of that, the primary thing is our housing and employment growth targets. So those are set in the countywide planning policies by Puget Sound Regional Council and we're then had specific, or specific targets that we need to be both for employment growth and for housing and not just housing overall, but housing at different income levels. So we performed that earlier exercise that you guys were aware of, where we brought out options of ways to address that, different zoning, different amendments to our land use code, addressing building height within different zones. And what that has resulted in is the updated zoning amendments in your packet. And we'll go a little bit more into detail if you like on each one of those and can rehearing as well. Essentially, what that was, was adding some area down to the commercial zone, rezoning, floating, downtown commercial. We're revising some allowances within our zoning code, which has yet to be addressed to allow multifamily within the elder mall area in the downtown or within the interchange commercial zone, increasing the height limit from 30 feet to 35 feet in our interchange commercial zone, our interchange use zone. And allowing or revising a number of our properties that are currently zoned in employment are one, two. And the next use. Therefore, additional rest potential for second floor and above residential on these properties. So with that, we're able to meet our housing targets and small time climate targets will be industrial and zone land that we have. So that's the big in this, that's where the major couple is. We also did a number of policy updates for consistency with those county policies and GMA updates. We've done a number of land use designation and zone revisions, also addressing documents that were received and for all that process from several. A number of pocket requests submitted for some revisions and we've addressed those based on your earlier recommendation. We've added a new natural resources section and the intent of that is to replace our natural resources element of our comprehensive plan. That was a whole element that was targeted really at just a few key policies addressing adjacency to agricultural use actually outside of the city limits. So there's property in order of the state limit line, long valley trail, full limits or shrink below, that's a designated agricultural problem. And those policies are intended to protect that agricultural use by providing notice on title to adjacent residences that, yes, you go next to a farm, you're likely to have smells and sites and other things typical to agriculture. It also establishes some buffering requirements in our landscape regulations. We will likely be amending those in the near future because they are a little excessive considering the adjacency of this component value trail also to the property. We've got a new natural resources section, no means only, that provides. Let's see, that, that is the one that really addresses the farming uses. We've added a land acknowledgement section, acknowledging that we're on the ancestral land of the Sioux Valley Tribe. And then also a new section on equity addressing the policies, the county policy policies. So with that, I'm going to turn over to you guys. I need to go into more details, so we can go page by page if you like. Talk about some of that ones.
Is there a value going page by page or do you guys just want to comment?
Another thing I do want to note is we have received four comment letters at this point. We have not made updates based on the comment letters in the draft that we have tonight. We will work to make updates for the next meeting if possible, but it's not likely that we'll have all that done by the next meeting because there are a substantial number of comments. So therefore, we'll continue with hearing, we'll take public comment and then we'll want to come back to you with a final comment that addresses public comment at your discretion and all the comments that we received from agencies. So so far, it's been Department of Commerce, Puget Sound Regional Council, Sioux Valley Tribe, Department of Fish and Wildlife and Department of Natural Resources.
And we have asked all those comments along to you, I believe, except for the commerce, they're, they're not formal comments. It's a, it's a notes in a checklist and what they've said is they may not even provide a formal comment letter if we are showing that we're working through things with them. And I think like we talked about at the last meeting, you know, how this works generally is that some agencies give comments, they're not requirements, some are suggestions and there doesn't have to always be a response to every comment. And then sometimes they will not check back and re-review until our five year mark. So it's an ongoing process that we, you know, continue.
Also, we know comments because there's a lot of comments that I kind of feel are a little bit dentic. A lot of them relate to having the specific language that it says, you remember land use element shall not be included. And then, for example, items on critical areas. We have a critical areas element of a comprehensive plan where we've provided that information. It seems like the right tool for their job. And so we don't want to provide duplicate information throughout multiple elements of our home plan because then it just suddenly balloons. So we'll be corresponding with commerce on that, but I feel like a lot of the comments can go away, it can resolve that issue. It's in the comp plan, we've addressed the issue, it just may not be in the particular element.
And we did get some, just so you guys know, we did get some agency comments on the capital facilities element, which you guys have already reviewed and council already passed a resolution on. So that was unfortunate and because some of them don't, do not review our elements until they're all submitted. And then we might have some shoreline and critical areas. And again, if we don't catch everything this time, it's an ongoing process. We'll, we'll catch it the next round, so.
I definitely appreciate different sections, makes, makes easier.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And stuff in different places.
Yeah. Remind me some questions. Okay, with like layout is I would, the table with all the revisions got run by that's the, and I know that's something to find later, but I think a lot of the provisions get used before they get defined, we want what it's around. So that table gets run by, but then revisions from the plan area start getting used and that much. And so hard to do.
So the difference there is we, we asked this to be based on, it used to be based on zoning, which we thought from our degree was too detailed because your zoning changes a lot more frequently than your comp plan. So we've instead made it to be based on your land use designations rather than zones that are broader. So that's where the second table is there. Yeah.
Ben, are, does, do these show up later though, are you saying? So we should watch where these show up.
Yeah, so, yeah, I think with, I just, yeah, E4, that's on page. But they're defined here, but I feel like they pop up somewhere else.
Okay, look.
Yeah, okay. Put in parentheses, the potential, it wouldn't be defined, but it could, and it would take up too much space, but it could call out CLDR, LDR, at least the acronym, but.
Yeah, that's possible to be. I'll just check that, don't just have, the revisions don't show up ahead of the provisions.
I think before, how is that, how is the study going clear than everything?
Yeah, so there was just some minor updates that they did to make the data consistent, but, or less consistent.
I wanted to make sure I wasn't missing a new one that was coming out.
I will post that high chart with the rest of the table. Oh, sorry, I just do it.
And help us up the whole game, and others are great additions that are great for community.
I wanted to know, I do want to do is update the figure numbers because those had been just the order from our previous comp plan when we had all of the figures at the back. Now that we've incorporated it, the, the numbers get a little out of order, so I'll be working to correct that.
I do have a question, but this is a way to define zone in my example, where the people brought up, where God, that only degree hits, that was me. So I didn't intend to watch. However, you know, readings come in on why, I think so. You are, so that, please, like, the car dealership there, the fact of your employment park definition, I mean, or like the commercial business, so what I can say. Trying to think about what people were frankly concerned about with development agreement that imagine car dealers or auto models potentially going to go in there, but I thought that is zone within playing the park and then.
Yeah, so.
Wasn't sure that was.
I don't know of a history of any kind of conversation on our party. Unless it's permitted by the zone, it's not allowed unless it's also addressed through the development agreement or through that master plan. And those both also have a public process to them, so they have to consider it just as an amendment.
Yeah, I guess, by course as well, I think only part does that, how much will it be limited number of commercials?
Right.
It's not, it's not geared toward retail, but there are certainly smaller scale or incidental commercials that happen in the only person.
It, it does allow sale of new and used autos and, and, and yeah, like Mike said, a lot of other things. Boat sales, you know? Yeah. And then like industrial type uses. Right. It's broad, yes.
It could be, could be broad, then you have a lot. They were bringing those things to retail. It's like, well.
Yeah, it allows business services. Let me see what it says. I don't know that shows true.
Something. Curiosity. Definitions, these are all those working processes.
Well, once a comprehensive plan is that it can be more broad, like, in some ways, then it's a little bit more, there's a little bit more teeth for this to be.
Straight retail is not allowed, but when you go into non, let's see, coffee stands, but through that master plan process, you would get, get the details there.
We just think there's a lot of, yeah.
Yeah, there was a lot of analysis that went into the zoning in particular.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, take a look through the policies and make sure you're in agreement with them and we're not missing something.
Yeah, I'll go to the final with the comments from.
The five amendments actually were pretty minor. We're in the comments game from PSRC.
Yeah.
The county, well, county haven't had.
There's another push up to step one.
Yeah. Housing, the housing and land use are separate, they're tracking, we're kind of combining like from the September 18th. I think we might have the housing, the housing's probably tracking a little faster just because we've been able to address some of the comments. We'll see if it's baked enough on the 18th, but I would think maybe that next meeting, first meeting in October, give my recommendation on the housing. And then we really, we have to move quickly after with the land use because we're running out of time, so. The September 18th.
That's your next meeting.
Is your next one and then, yeah.
Come back after that for your final recommendation.
Okay.
With the full amendments based on comment.
I mean, theoretically, if there wasn't public comment that came in on the 18th and you felt comfortable with where the element was for housing and we feel comfortable, we've been able, because we're meeting next week with the county. So it'd probably be tight, but it's possible and we'll let you know if we think a recommendation is feasible at that meeting for housing and then that moves in along. I, I, land use will have to be probably October because we still have to move it sometime in October because we have to move it to council. And then we're going to be issuing the, the CIPA for the comp plan as well. So you'll see that coming out.
So we're also sending notice to the specific owners of property that had a actual change to their zone. Not where the zone name changed, but where there was substantive change to the zone. So I do imagine that will probably get some interest.
Yeah, and we will make sure that our audio and video works. We'll run through that with IT and make sure that we're, and potentially even have it out there where we've heard the audio is better. So we can do that for the, the next meeting. Yeah. Yeah.
Building to. Even this. Or are we able to learn more? The advice was.
I T knows about this, the challenges that we're a small city with no staff, and so we can't just grab, you know, an I T person, that's for.
He's not here tonight, but yeah, we should be able to do this, like, it should be simpler for us. We know that they bought this, you know, they, the, this building was completed when, at the end of COVID or during COVID, I guess. Anyways, when they purchased this equipment, it's, it needs to be updated, um, it was inexpensive, so.
Yeah. Or it shouldn't be by this time of state.
I think it probably has, you know, yeah, and, yeah, yeah. 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 Yeah, yeah.
I don't know. This will let us know.
Yeah.
We need you to reach out to someone, or, yeah, I mean, we can.
You need to sign anything else?
No. Music group, I'm on the, they're not recording though.
I saw that there was like a.